Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the Sherburne Zoning Board of Appeals. It's seven o'clock on September 2nd, 2021. We're holding a Zoom meeting. I'm the Chair, Rick Novak. Our other members are Jonathan Fitch and Ron Stefick. And we've got a fairly busy agenda, so let's get going. A continuation of 2021-7 petition of Nora Lynch for special permit under 32, 3.2.17, 3.2.19, and 5.2.7 for professional offices in retail space with signage. Ms. Lynch, are you here?
I am here, thank you.
All right. I think you were going to come back to us with a plan.
Yes, and I submitted it to Jeannie. Would you like me to pull it up?
If you could. I mean, or has that what? Let's pull it up, just in case someone who's here observe has not yet seen it.
Okay.
Give it a try, sharing it. Not will figure something out.
Okay, so for the signs, we're going to talk about the signs, right? And do I have permission to share, Jeannie?
You should be able to share, yeah.
Okay. It's sailed in my desktop.
There you go.
My daughter's game is playing. Okay, I know where.
Go for another screen.
How about that? Can you see the photos there?
Yes.
Gallery and gifts, okay, great. So that's the one that would be on the entrance to the gallery and gifts. Okay?
Okay.
And the other one, I just, here's another one that would be at the front door. That was just like temporary markers. So Landmark Residential, Sherburne Gallery and Gifts, and then Nora Lynch and Associates. Okay?
Okay.
That's at the front main door.
And, and.
Yes.
My feeble recollection, Landmark Residential and Nora Lynch and Associates are separate entities or related?
They are actually legal, separate entities.
Correct. But, but you might have a finger in both of those pies.
I think I have a finger in all three of them, but that's okay.
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, all, all good. And Sherburne Gallery and Gifts is an LLC, but okay, so that's why I'll register it and all that.
Right, right.
Um, and then for the signage, however, for the main signage, I'm not putting my name up. It would be, let's see, if you, I'm just going to not share my, I'm going to stop sharing. And I'll pull up my email. That was from Bass Signs, Jeannie.
Right.
Let me see if I can pull that up really quickly. Thank you for your patience. Okay, here we go. Let me share. Let me get back to Zoom, share my screen. Desktop. Let's see if this works. Do you see this with the signage there?
Yes, thank you.
It would be number five, representing five Washington Street, Landmark Residential. And this would be painted black. All the specs are here. They actually inlaid this. Obviously, this will be painted black, so it'll look something like that. Okay, so that's on the 16, wood 16 side. This will be a placeholder in case, I just didn't want to put my name on there right now. So that'll be a placeholder if I do decide if another person comes in there. Then I certainly, you know, will make an appeal for, you know, get approval for that. Whoops, there goes the game, sorry. Um. There we go. Okay, and then the next, the next one would be on the root 27 sign, side, and that is what it would be, since it's already white here. And again, this is just a mock-up, right? It would be Landmark Residential, Sherburne Gallery and Gifts. So pretty basic, like I'd mentioned before.
Okay, and had, had this, had Chris, our zoning enforcement officer, confirm that all these signs met the dimensional requirements?
Yes, and they are not changing for the posts that are there. And then also, Chris, from the building inspector, Chris, is that?
Yes.
Yes, so he also confirmed about the parking spaces. Technically, I only need 11 spaces. I have the seven spaces plus, you know, basically a loading zone there. And that was something else that was submitted to you already. And I also have, you know, easily four, just to make the minimum, where the septic system was put in and around the septic system. I did speak with Mark Oram, and even though I did.
Can we, can we?
Sure.
Can you stick with the signs for a minute?
Sure.
And Ron, you are our design guru, so keep me honest here. He's entitled to one ground sign as a bright, and then the second one under 5.2.6B would be by special permit. Is that the theory?
I think so. Now, well, they didn't, weren't these signs already existing?
They were already, all those posts were existing.
Those are there?
Yes.
So they must have been permitted in the past.
I'm not changing the posts at all. They're staying the same.
Well, we could say they, they either comply with all dimensional requirements or replicate existing signs. That we, that we think, Ron?
Yeah, I, to me, they look like they do comply with the dimensional requirements.
Right, right, right. And I think they probably do. I'm just trying to be, trying to be careful. All right. Ground sign. All right, so how, they're going to be two ground signs, right, Nora? And, and did you, did you show us two on the building?
Two on the building that are already there, by the way. I did not change anything. They were already there, except for the names.
You changed the, the lettering in the labels, but not the, not the layout or dimensions. Okay. All right, any of the board members have any other questions or comments on the signs before we move to the other site issues?
No, I don't have any concerns.
Jonathan?
Nor do I, nope.
Any, any members of the public here to comment on the signs? Okay, hearing none, please proceed, ma'am. You were telling us about the site plan.
Let me pull up the site plan. Jeannie, do you happen to have it handy? Oh, I think I've got it.
You did send it to us, I know, I saw it.
I did send it.
Let me just go under my set. I'm sorry to, I didn't. Let me go to desktop here, a moment. I got it, here we go.
Okay.
Share screen. Okay, do you see it here?
Yes.
Okay, so this was the existing before the septic. Here's the septic field that was put in, okay? At the lower parking lot. So there were previously all these parking spaces here. If you can see where my pointer is. Here. So in the yellow, here are the seven parking spaces. I will say that this is really kind of the eighth slash loading zone area. So here are seven spaces here. Chris said they do not have to be relined or anything like that. And he approved this too. And where it says garage here, this is a pre-existing, this is the, the, this has always been, as far as I know, the last 20 years. The store, it was always retail.
Right.
The property was originally built in 1865. I actually saw that, I found the plaque, which is on the lower, but that's another thing. So basically, I just really had to come up with 11. This could be one here, and I just had the other two, so we can go, you know, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. I mean, I definitely could have more spaces in here that would fit more cars, but I just.
You've got the room, but you've only.
Got the room.
And.
Go ahead.
And you're not required to have those striped and lined. You should simply have to show you've got the space for it, if I recall.
Exactly.
Okay, and.
And so what is, what is the, is that a gravel surface or?
It's a gravel mix.
Yeah, it's kind of difficult to line on gravel.
Right, and it's always been that, and it was always, you know, like a piece stone. I guess even before that, it says here, there was piece stone there.
And you say you reviewed this with Mark Orm?
No, so I reviewed it all with Chris, but then I did speak with Mark Orm because the Board of Health, apparently, when the septic was put in less than 10 years ago, when the previous owner bought the place, he put it in, but he never got, it was always a conditional certificate of compliance for the new septic system. And some of the conditions were this had to be more blocked in, and I do have, meaning this, because it's somewhat of a raised septic system field. So I did repair the, and Mark signed off on this part where there was granite. And then here, because of the railroad ties were falling over. So I actually made this with nice granite, and then here granite. But when I just spoke with Mark, I'd spoken with him right after, right before, after our meeting last month. And then he was on vacation, so I was just following up with him the other day. He finally went over there, and he said that apparently, even though I never thought this needed to get done, there needs to be one, two sections here, say, like one and a half granite. If you think of the granite post that you see out there, and then some here. There's a, right here is the vent pipe. So I am in the process next week of signing, you know, having a landscaper come and put the granite, to finish the granite here, to protect the septic field and also the pipe, so that, that will be finished off. And I do have another meeting for the final, final, I guess, with the planning board. So I anticipate before the 21st of September that I will, that will be done by my landscaper.
Okay.
So the purpose of the granite curb is to prevent cars from parking on the septic field. Is that correct?
Um, yes, but also you need to have it so that it, you know, have you see other raised septic systems? It's not just from the cars, but it's also, you know, because it needs to be retained, it's a retaining piece to retain the soil and whatnot.
You know, the last, the last, seems to, I recall at the last meeting, you had identified a handicap parking space?
I did, and so I talked, I don't need, so I did talk to Chris about all the requirements that would need for the building, whether it's handicap accessible. He said, I do not, based on the square footage and age and whatnot. So I do not need a handicap, but one thing that he said that I could do is you can either make a handicap, if I can come back down here to this section. He said you could have a loading zone here, and then this would be, if you have a space, number seven would be the handicap space, even though it's the same size as a car, but then you'd have this be the loading zone, basically with that. So it's two spaces. This isn't exactly.
You need the four foot space.
And this isn't measured, this isn't to scale, I mean, but it would, I would have, this is pretty much almost like the eighth space. Originally, I had thought I had eight spaces, but according to this, it's seven. But you can see, this really is, again, it's not really exact, but this is really a whole other space here. And it's not, it doesn't go against here, so just FYI.
So you have a review coming up with the planning board?
Yes, apparently I need to.
Are they going to review the parking layout?
I believe they, that was one of the things that they were going to review.
Yeah. Do you think, it looks, I would expect that they would want to see a drawing to scale.
I can double check with, do you know?
It looked, you know, it looks to me like.
This was already here, so I just kind of went with these lines here.
That's fine, that's fine. It looks like, you know, you can, if the spaces are 10 feet wide, that's, you know, that's more than adequate. And then it looks like there's enough backup space to get out, but if you scroll up to the gravel area, you know, there are some issues there about backup space and, like, number 12, I don't know.
This is, this is right here, this is the wall, so there's plenty of space here.
Yeah, there is.
And I could actually go, and actually, in hindsight, you know, if I, I can go with an engineer, I guess, and then I can have, I definitely could have three spaces here and a good backup. So, you know, there's a.
I, if, I would recommend that you get a professional to lay this out, to get all the clearances and make sure that, you know, cars can pull into the space and back out. Because just off the top of my head, it looks like you have a little bit of a problem with some maneuvering with the way this is laid out.
And if you remember, all I need is 11 spaces, but I can certainly do that.
Well, yeah.
I, I, I'm around, probably your best, go ahead, Ron.
Well, if you remove the two, the three spaces, then it wouldn't be any problem at all.
Right.
But.
Yeah, I'd say, keep it simple, layout, 11 complying spaces, and then say, I've got extra space too, and.
Okay. But that's for the planning board, you're giving me.
Right, right. One of our conditions will be that you need to get, will need to get site plan approval from them. And we should have mentioned that to you last time, I apologize, but, but you do need to get that. And again, what Jeannie requires from you in terms of plan detail will be up to him.
All right, I'll definitely meet with him before the 21st of September.
Ron, do you think that, do you think that covers it?
Pretty much, yeah.
Um, all right. And Ms. Lynch, do you have anything else you'd like to tell us in support of your petition?
No, thank you very much, and thank you for, you know, taking the time to do this. Thank you.
All right. Is any member of the public here to comment on the five? Five Washington Street, right? Yeah, five Washington Street petition. Hearing none, okay. Board members, how do you feel about this?
Oh. I just have a question, looking at the petition. Is the petition limited to request for a special permit for the signage? No?
No, I think it's a special permit under 3, 217, 3219. I think those are going to be retail operations. I'll look at it. Keep asking your question, I'll look it up.
It's retail office and signage.
Yeah.
Retail office and signage, okay.
And there's no change of use here, right? I mean, that's what it's always been, is that correct?
Yes, except for a gap in time that it was, that section wasn't retail, but it always has been retail in the past, right, Jeannie? That's.
Right, 17 is office and 19 is retail.
Okay.
17 and 19, okay. Ready? I don't have any questions. I, I share the concern about layout of those parking spaces and turnaround space. Looks very tight.
Yeah, I mean, that's just silly, that was me just saying, okay, I know I can, because I've been parking to there anyway, but I can definitely get a better plan in action there, even if it's just coming up with the 11 car, you know, the 11.
Yeah, and it's in your interest too, because if there's a plan in our record showing like 12, and then somebody backs into somebody else, they're going to come complain to you.
I understand, no, thank you.
Mr. Stefick?
Yeah. Well, should we condition the approval on, uh, planning board site, plan approval?
One of, that's one of, one of several I have in mind.
Could you repeat what you said? I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, that is one of several conditions I have in mind.
Okay.
Would you like me to stop the share?
But you can leave it up, I think it's helpful. And Ron, just if it helps your thoughts, and Jonathan, if it helps yours. My notes on what I think about for conditions were that they, they close out the, the open disposal works permit. You know, that's a problem they sort of inherited, but it sounds like she's doing a good job cleaning it up, but that should be cleaned up.
Excuse me, what was that? Oh.
The, the, the septic permit.
The septic field, okay, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
That, that they apply for, that she applied for and obtained site plan approval from the planning board under, and Jeannie, I forget the section of the, of our bylaw that requires it, but, but she has to have that as part of her permit. And that in, in connection with that, the plan approved by the planning board include 11 spaces with appropriate design, design and turning radiuses.
If I.
Sorry. Ron, I wasn't necessarily going to say that she has to put it in HP space, because if she does, is required, I don't think we should necessarily require it. I know how you feel about that.
Were you talking about the dimension of the width of the space?
No, I was, remember, she had, she had said, over, if you can scroll down, number seven could sort of do double duty, a, a functional.
For the handicap?
Yeah, but, but if she's not required to actually have an HP space.
I'm happy to put in markings for this, as Chris had mentioned. This could be, and again, it's not to scale, because there's two full spaces here, really. And so I could have this be the handicap, and then this be, full space be the loading zone. She said that's what you can do. If you have one space, then it's handicap, then you have the loading zone here, that would suffice.
Well, I don't know. I mean, if, if so, if a person comes in to use the handicap space, and there's a vehicle in the loading zone, they may not be able to get out of their.
Well, I'm not calling it a loading zone for purposes here. I'm calling it a loading zone, but if we change this to a handicap, then this would be the handicap space, these two part lot, these two spaces.
Yeah, that, that would be the, I, I'm not sure what it's referred to, but there is a space required adjacent to a handicap space for.
Yes, the door clearance area or some.
It's roughly four feet wide, I believe.
Right, Chris said this could be it, along with this, these two sections would be the handicap, so I could do that for sure. That's not technically a loading zone, just FYI.
Yeah, they're usually shown on a plan with kind of diagonal lines through.
Again, I was just told, like, you know, I had this, Chris actually brought this with him, and he said, yeah, we can use this, and that's what I thought we could do with schematics, so I just kind of went with this.
And then, Ron, continuing, the, the other condition I had in mind was that the, and Jeannie, I'll go through all this if I make a motion, that the signs either comply with the dimensional requirements completely, or that they simply replicate the existing sign that's, that's there as a bright.
I don't know.
I mean, that's how I was, that's how I was just trying.
Can't we just, can't we just approve the signs?
Okay, I guess that's right.
Yeah, I mean, we, I don't recall a condition like that with signs for other projects.
The sign that's there right now is actually removed. I have one of them still on one side. It, I couldn't really use up because it was engraved in, you know, and so it was really, Metro West Insurance had all the website, it was these two sections essentially. So it was very large.
So it's, it's my opinion that we needn't have a condition for the approval of the signs. I, I think they comply.
Okay.
The bylaws.
Great, okay.
I agree.
All right. In that case, if you gentlemen will delve, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we approve the petition 2021-7 for a special permit under 32, 3.2.17, 3.2.19, and 5.2.7 for the operation of professional offices in retail with signage on the conditions that first, the applicant comply with all requirements of the Sherburne Board of Health with respect to completion of outstanding conditions for the septic system installed by a prior owner. And second, that the applicant obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the project. And that the site plans show not less than 11 parking spaces with appropriate design and turning radius, including handicap space in the location, indicated as location seven by the applicant. That's my motion.
I second that motion.
Any further lively debate?
May I ask a question?
You may.
So is that going to be requirement now to have an official handicap space there, that you're asking for number seven?
I think, I think we're, we're requiring that you have it shown on your site plan approval with the planning board. I imagine, given that area is gravel, right, or something like that?
This is, this is pavement.
I think it's probably a good idea that you stripe it, but I think, I think we'll defer to the planning board as the exact mechanics of how you'd implement that.
Okay.
If they say, if they say you can show it on your plan and not do anything on the ground, I won't stand in their way. Ron, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, well, that would be okay, but it, you know, a hand, if it's a true handicap space, it must have a sign also identifying it, and there must be usually markers on the ground as well.
Right, but, but in theory, she's not legally required to have one at all.
Okay, so she, so she's providing the space in the event that she may need to provide it in the future? Is that?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Uh, okay, yes.
What is, what does the building inspector say?
He said I legally do not need a handicap space, but I'm all for having a handicap space. And he said also that this, this space and this space, so seven, and let's just call it eight, okay? Could be that, those two, then would be a handicap space.
Chris did say that because Nora will have under 15 spaces, a handicap space is not required.
Okay, well, why don't we condition, why don't we condition it on the basis of meeting the requirements of, of the, you know, the state building code and, and the, the approval of the building inspector?
Yeah, I'll amend my comment to say it should have, that the 11 parking spaces shall have appropriate design and turning radiuses, including any applicable ADA requirements. How's that?
Okay.
And then, Ms. Lynch, if the answer is none or applicable, you don't have to do any.
I understand, thank you.
All right, so motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Fitch, would your second still apply to the motion as amended?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Exploration.
Oh, expiration. Has it been a, is this a two-year or four-year, Jeannie, under the bylaw?
I think it's been five. But it's a, it's up to you.
Well, we shouldn't treat it any differently than others, so five-year term.
Yeah.
Okay. Further comments, corrections, other things you caught, Jeannie?
Oh, none for me.
No.
All right, Novak quotes, aye, if you do it by name?
Stefick quotes, aye.
Fitch, aye.
All right, it's unanimous. You get your permit. Thanks for coming in, thanks for your patience with us.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Good luck, good luck with the planning board, I hope it's a smashing success.
Really excited about it, it'll be great for Sherburne, so thank you very much.
All right, next up, 2021-8 petition of Monica Williams for a finding under 1.4.6 to replace two pre-existing non-conforming structures with a single structure in the same location at 34 South Main Street in the Residence A District. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant, Ms. Williams?
Yes, hi, how are you?
All right, what can you tell us about your application? We, we see your papers.
Yes, you have seen the papers, right? Because I was just thinking, it would be hard for me to pull out from my emails, from my architect, but I presented the papers. So we basically, we have right now two shed structures that date from 1975, had been sitting in my backyard. And we want to just basically build a, a full structure for a home gym, including a half bath and some storage, because we live in a very, very small home. So we don't have any room for all the gym equipment that we have. And we, of course, wanted to build a nice structure there and to replace. and to replace these very old falling apart structures, and it will be matching also the house that we just remodeled.
Um, Jeannie, can you pull up her plan that was, or is that possible?
Wow.
If we can't, we can't, but if it's easy, let's try to do it because it it sort of tells the tale pretty well. And 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 while she's looking for that, were you able to resolve your situation with the Conservation Commission? We saw that there was some enforcement action on this property?
Yes, yes, there it is.
Hi, yeah, so um I've been working with the Conservation Committee um to work with the driveway and the driveway structure's been finished. Uh, we're still in the process of doing plantings uh because uh the landscape architect that worked with us and submitted the plantings um to conservation then decided that due to the shade that we receive on the driveway side, we need to change some of the plants, so we're just waiting for some of the plants to come in. And uh that's all we need left to do there um with the driveway and 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 um addressing the conservation encroachment from that driveway structure.
Yeah, I actually, I uh I communicated with Elizabeth this week because I had a first meeting with conservation about two weeks ago about this structure in the back. And they said, well, you need, we need to make sure that the work in your driveway begins before you can move on and talk to us about what's going on in the backyard. So I already contacted them as soon as the work started, which is basically completed, as he said, just the planting that's pending. So that they could send someone here and then we can move on to talk to them also about this new structure that we want to build.
Got it, because while the, Jeannie, you're not able to pull that up, are you?
No, I can't, I can't find it when I sent you.
All right, so let let me just try to describe it uh for people who haven't seen it. Uh, the two sheds are in the back and um they sort of form two overlapping little rectangles. Um, and uh the reason they're here before us is the um the southernmost rectangle is twenty-three feet off the lot line when in theory it should be further back. And so the relief they seek from us is um the ability to have that twenty-three foot setback in what I think is a thirty-foot zone. And so they're just building up to the um to to the existing structure. Uh, much like another petition we might see later, Mr. Mr. Weatherall. The other uh, the other issue that 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 these folks have is that the the northern shed, the northern box intrudes some into the wetlands, and so they'll have to deal with the Conservation Commission on that. But that is outside our jurisdiction because that part complies with zoning. So I think the only thing, and correct me, petitioners, if I have it wrong, that you are before us on is the ability to rebuild that southern edge of the southern shed in in the same location, the same intruding location of where it intruded the setback.
Correct.
Okay, um, and and board members, again, this is something we've seen before. Uh, i- if you look at the plan, the uh the east-west wall of the new building um is a little bit longer than the intruding east-west wall of the old building. Uh, it doesn't intrude any further. And this is something that has, uh, we've heard this a lot before, a mere exacerbation of the uh existing non-compliance. So a- again, I think, I think that would be their argument, that they would argue that under one point four point six, we've granted other mere exacerbation um extensions of such walls. Not to make the argument for them, but I think that's where they're going.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something real quickly, um, because you cannot really see on the screen the structures. As one of the sheds is narrower than the other shed, so, okay. John's saying that that I'm going to repeat myself here, okay?
No.
Yeah, the 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 footprint of the new building is larger than the two existing buildings. Although the north and south's location of your new building is approximately where the existing are. Is that correct?
Correct.
Exactly.
Great, and 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 the north wall is a little little longer in the wetlands than the north wall of the existing building. Um, that's not a problem with us because it's it's it complies with zoning. That's something for you to work out with constable. Uh, the south, the south wall is what we can give you some relief on. Okay, uh, so does that sort of complete your presentation, petitioners?
I believe so, yes, I believe so.
I I I think I'd just like to add that, as Monica mentioned, the structures that are there now that that um were there when I purchased the house from the Lilliman's, um, they're old and rundown. Um, you know, and they don't, they don't look good there. I mean, the floor is rotted, it's it's bad, you know? And I I think that um, as you've seen, if you've walked by or driven by, uh, we've done a a pretty decent job of making the 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 frontage of the the existing house uh to specs, uh, you know, a New England colonial style. And that's what we kind of want to match with that back as well. So I I think it would, it would add curb appeal to being in the historic historic district as well. That's a bit of your hope.
We don't want to go anywhere beyond the size and um you have the documents there um that I submitted. I mean, it will look really nice. It's a simple structure actually inside.
Okay, um, are there any um members of the, and and while they're not up on the screen, there are good uh diagrams showing the 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 building and elevations and stuff uh that'll be in our files. Is there any member of the public here to speak or comment on this petition?
Hello, I'm Charles Brecklin. Uh, I'm here with my wife Amy Lam. Uh, we are at thirty-six South Main Street, so we're we're at Butters. Um, and I just had a few questions about this project. You know, first of all, I want to say that, you know, that um Monica and John's done a really nice uh job with the property. It was, it was uh pretty rundown when John purchased it and they've they've really done some nice improvements to it. Uh, we just want to try to understand a little bit what what this project means to us uh as in a butter. And, you know, what my first question, which I've, you've answered, is are there plans submitted? But we haven't seen them, so.
I just put them up.
Uh, there we go. Jeannie to the rescue.
Well, it's hard to see the whole thing, but it's there.
Thanks, Jeannie, no, she did.
There it is.
Can you go to the, can you go to the next page, Jeannie, the one that's got the um? Yeah, there we go. Uh, the one's got the site. There we go, all right.
All right, well, let me rotate it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Everybody stand on your head.
One more.
You're almost there.
There it is.
Okay, there it is, perfect. Okay, so Mr. Brecklin, could you see, see what I was describing there with the the north and south lines that are actually left and right on this drawing?
So, yes, and that was another one of our questions, um, which I believe was answered is um that the actual footprint of the the building will increase. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, as proposed, it will.
And the the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, you can see the two little boxes and then the bigger box.
Right, so, so it it is expanding the footprint of the of the existing structure. And is, just the question is, what is that, you know, so what does that mean for the pre-existing non-conformant status of of these these structures? Is there any uh impact on that, or?
Yeah, um, Jeannie, can you zoom in on it at all? If not, I'll do it with with what we've got.
I.
Yeah, forget it, nevermind. You you you're great, okay. Um, so, Mr. Brecklin, this is a um, a probably have in town a lot uh or or not a lot, but but frequently um with older structures. Usually it's a front line setback as opposed to a uh, as opposed to a sideline. But it, but it's the same principle where there's an old building that's built within a setback. And someone wants to rebuild the old building or extend that intruding area a little bit. And the rule under the Massachusetts cases is that, well, the general rule is you can't expand in non-conformity and you can't create a new non-conformity. So, for example, if they wanted to move the shed line back to twenty feet off your lot line, they couldn't do that. That's a variance. Um, and they aren't asking for that and would have a hard time giving it to them. Um, but where you are doing a relatively minor extension of the wall without moving further into the setback area, the Massachusetts case law is that 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 is a mere exacerbation. That's, that's why we keep using that term. That's what they think, what's what the judge has used. A mere exacerbation of the existing non-conformity. And uh, and those typically the board has approved if they're minor. You know, if they were making that wall a hundred feet long, that would be different. Does that explain it, I hope?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you're standing in the property, it's um this this little area that's a little extra there. It's really small. It looks bigger there on the picture, you know, but it's a really small extra space just to make it a whole continuous space. That's basically our idea, right? Because of the way the sheds were, it wouldn't make any sense for us to build the way the sheds were, you know?
Right, but 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 he asked a legit question, which is, is it bigger? And the answer is, yep.
Yeah, I think it, I I think square foot is wide. I think it's between six and eight square foot increase in the space in those two uh uh two clear areas, the one long one in the backside and then the one in the front on the left. I think that total is between eight, five to eight square foot, roughly, maybe a little more.
Mr. Brecklin, did you have other questions?
Yes, um, so um, we were wondering, is there any alternative? For instance, you know, e- e- expanding to the other side of the of the larger shed with the the footprint or even reorienting the structure ninety degrees?
Well, I don't want to make the applicant's argument for them, but they are already, and I think in a little bit of hot water with the cons comm going to the north. And I I I think their reception, trying to move the whole building north. I won't speak for the cons comm, but I bet it would be chilly at best.
Okay.
Uh, as to whether they could rotate it sideways, um, that's uh, that's up to you and them. You you can certainly argue against it. I don't think we are compelled to grant these. We usually um try to look for consensus.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Fitch?
Yes, uh, uh, is it the case that there's a a bathroom uh and a shower in this studio?
There's got, we we can have a shower there. I already contacted a couple of months ago uh someone from the health department, I believe, Mark. Yeah, and I also talked to the engineer who did a septic in this house, actually was able to have direct contact. I have an email with him, so we cannot, we can't put a half bath there. And that's what you see on the other plan. We cannot put a shower there, so we're actually using a lot of the room for for some storage because we really could use some. No, there's no shower there. We can't, we actually can't.
And and does it, is there a half bath in there now?
No.
No, there's nothing. They're just two sheds.
Got it. And 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 you probably, as part of the overall work you've done on the house, which is extensive, have you had to put in a new septic system?
There was a a new, the Lilliman's put in a new septic system two years prior to uh me purchasing the property. So it's, but it's, it's, it's limited. So, yeah, we couldn't put in a a full bath out there. Um, and this, the one of the, one of the sheds was actually um permitted, I think in seventy-something as a as a painter's studio. Um, so, you know, we're, again, we're hoping to just add on and then and make improvements. So it was a permitted structure that had gone through ta- through town, through uh, through you guys a while, while back, right? So, uh, we just made it bigger.
How it came to be built in the setback area isn't known.
Who knows? Who knows, but there's a, there's a, there's a retaining wall that sits there that, you know, I've got, I've been dealing with the Conservation Committee with, and it's, it's not likely as I think John or s- uh, I, someone was asking um about moving it it closer to the, on the conservation side. It's just not feasible because there's a a a significant drop off on that side with a retaining wall that's already in place. Um, it would, it would, it's, yeah, it wouldn't be feasible to 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 expand on on that side.
Okay, a- a- and Mr. Brecklin, I'm sorry, we we shifted away. Uh, were you done with your questions or?
Uh, I I had, I had one more, and and I apologize, I'm not not trying to be difficult here. I don't know if you recall, but when when we moved on the property, the Lilliman's uh driveway was on our property. And and so, you know, that that was pre-existing, you know, John and and Mike. It's just, we've had some difficulties with this, with this property. So so we're not trying to be difficult, we just want to understand how it impacts us because we were significantly impacted in the past. Um, my um, uh, one, one, my second last question is, what about the height? Is the height going to change?
Oh, Jeannie, can you go back to the um, to the drawings? Okay, so.
We can see the structure and we just, we're, we're hoping that it wasn't going to increase in height.
So, uh, tell us a, tell us about the height change, petitioner.
Yeah, we're just trying to figure that out. We're looking at the the plan right now.
Ha- having driven past, it looks like it's probably a a a bigger, a taller building in addition to being.
We, I think um with the ex, because of the expansion, that was the 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 pitch that our architect felt would be um eh best and as well, as well as to match um what we did with the house and provide some extra storage in a loft, like a, like a ha- a small loft area. Because I think we were going to do cross beams, tru- uh trusses, and that was the pitch for the trusses.
Yeah, I actually, I talked, I wish, I wish you could have been in this meeting. Uh, I talked to my architect not a long time ago. And uh, at least what he thinks, and I'm not saying that is is a done word, but what he thinks that from um Charlie and Amy's house, that he wouldn't be seeing much of the structure that would impact them, you know, once it was built, you know, because of them being so elevated there. Um, we're just trying really to keep it as simple as possible and make it beautiful, that's all, really.
Nice, looks very nice.
So, um, so a apart from the um, the side yard issue, uh, this, this building would be uh allowed on the property, is that correct?
I I I, well, there, there was a build, the 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 initial building, uh, if you look into the plans, there's two. One of them was a permitted building that was allowed to be on the property. And then there was a shed that was put next to it, and I believe that, and I'm not, and I'm not sure that that I guess homeowners can put a shed anywhere, right? And I guess the Lilliman's put a shed there. I don't know.
No, not, not anywhere. That's a subject for a different day, but.
Okay, well, I I don't know. All I know is when I, when I, when I, you know, purchased, the 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 two structures were there. And um, you know, when, you know, when, when Monica and I decided to move in and and make a a a home fitness studio, uh, the just, if we had just tried to revamp the 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 painter's studio, which was the permanent studio from the past, it was too small for uh, you know, the reformer that she has, the treadmill that I have, the, you know, a couple of weightlifting things. It was too, wasn't big enough to fit all that and and be able to work out.
Yeah.
Well, my, our thought was, well, why don't we just combine the two buildings because there's already one there?
Right, no, my point was that, you know, you could put a garage on your property as long as it conformed to all of the side yard and all the environmental conditions. Um, so it seems to me that, you know, the sole issue is basically whether this, whether we can find a way to uh allow the the building to be placed where the existing sheds are or not.
Right, correct.
And and I can't, I can't read the, what is the existing side yard condition for the shed?
Looks like twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three? So moving at seven feet uh is not possible?
No, um, if we moved at seven feet, we'd be dropped off into the wetlands. We're already in the wetlands on the one side as it is. We're in the hundred-foot buffer zone of the wetlands.
You're a hundred foot, but you're not in the fifty-foot no build.
No, we're not.
Correct, but i- if.
There are many projects in in Sherburne where there is building, at least a small amount of it uh within that, you know, that uh fifty to one hundred-foot zone.
Sure, um, if you, if if you were able to, I look at, oh, you can't really see it on the, on the the plotline diagram, but that that side, about five feet from the 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 wall, the 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 side of the of the structure, it drops off about ten feet down. the 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 side of the of the structure, it drops off about ten feet down.
Yeah, there's a big slope there.
Uh it's a huge slope going down into.
But 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 I think
It'd be tough.
It it isn't the short answer to Ron's question, which is they could, if they chose, build a seven-foot narrower structure that was on, was stayed on the right side of the zoning line. It could. You you might not, it might not be what you wanted, but it could be done.
Yeah, it it it'd be, it'd be tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it would be tough.
So.
No question.
I mean, I.
No, it'd be tough.
Yeah.
We could do, I mean, we'd have to come in with a, put in a a new retaining wall further, further out. So we'd have to work with the conservation to see if they'd allow us to move a retaining wall.
Yeah, budget-wise, it'll be, for us, budget-wise, to be honest with you all, budget-wise, it'll be a nightmare.
Yeah.
I I didn't say easily, and I didn't say it's what you wanted, and I didn't say it's the right solution. I'm just saying, things could happen.
Sure.
Well, do we uh really know that that the smaller shed is a pre-existing non-conforming structure?
That's what we were told. I mean, I thought it would be the easiest thing just to build where it already is. But we were told that it was, right? At least, that's what I just read on the ladder. I spoke with Inspector too, and he didn't see a problem of us building there, but he said, well, these are non-conforming structures.
Right.
What was it? Uh
Chris.
Existing before zoning was introduced?
Don't know. Good question.
No, I, Jonathan, I I think if these are from the seventies, clearly the zoning was in place. And I think the thirty-foot um line was in place, but they also have been there more than the seven and ten-year periods.
And I I also know.
Nineteen seventy-five.
And I, and I do believe, and I don't know too much, and Charlie may know a little bit more on on um the history of the the properties. Uh I know the Lilliman's owned the property that abuts it, right? And I know that he sold that property to a builder. So maybe when he sold that property to a builder, the shed was already there.
Yeah, he he might have backed his way into his owning violation, but but even if he did back his way into his owning violation, it was more than ten years ago.
Definitely. The assessor's office gave me the date for both structures as of nineteen seventy-five.
Right. So Jonathan, I I believe that if we chose to, uh we we could give the relief under one point four point six, even though it it's definitely not for nineteen fifty-four, which is when the first zoning went in Sherbrooke.
Okay.
Now, the question is, do we, do we choose to? Uh the standard is we have to make a finding that the change extension or alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That that's our standard.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure, sorry, sorry, sorry. Um I'm just looking down to read from section one point four point six of our zoning bylaw, which says, pre-existing non-conforming structures, uses or structures may not be changed, altered, or expanded unless there's a finding by the special permit granting authority that such change, extension, or alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And then it goes on, say, provided that the change alteration shall comply with all existing height and setbacks. So this the 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 new building, as as Jeannie has hopefully up here, uh would comply with height. Now, that's interesting. To the extent it's taller and within the setback area, Jonathan, is that a new violation?
It's taller and wider.
Right, well, well, the wider, the wider can clearly fit within the um uh mere exacerbation.
Okay.
Question is, is the height a new violation? And I don't think it is, because I think in in other cases where we've had this in the front yard situation, sometimes the the new building has been taller than the original one.
Mm-hmm.
I I can't.
You know, I mean, it, you look, I mean, looking at the elevations, it's not a tall building.
No.
No. It's a typical one-story building, you know, with a sloped gabled roof and.
Right.
I I think it's the Auckland decision, Rick.
You know, if if it were a two-story building, I think we, there would be a case against it. But it's a, you know, it's a scale that is appropriate on a residential lot. So I
You know, I think. We're getting up to date on board, board, your claim, which I forget.
Well, it lists uh the kinds of changes to a pre-existing non-conforming structure that would be um so minor that so recall, a special permit would not even be required.
Height, one of those?
No, I don't have the decision here. Uh it was a a list of of a fairly minor changes. And uh I don't know, this, this doesn't strike me as a as a significant change, but uh assuming that it is a new, a non-conformity, it's the same test uh whether or not uh it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And
Right.
And I don't believe that the uh permitting the uh that new non-conformity would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
That that sounds right, and and the case with Jeannie's favorite name from twenty fourteen, the dead brick case uh did it, did involve a increase in heights, Tom. Um I think I'm with you. All right, well, Mr. Breckling, you are the immediately affected neighbor. Um not that you're a member of our board and get a vote, but what is your feeling about whether you feel this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than looking at the sheds you got now?
No, I I don't feel that it is. And so I, you know, I appreciate the board entertaining our questions um and um I think it will, you know, be aesthetically more pleasing uh of a property with these changes.
All right, thank you. That that that's that's most helpful. Again, you're not a voting member, but we want to, we want to hear your voice. Board member, is first, is there anybody else here to speak on this petition? Okay, um board members, how do we feel about this?
I'm I'm pretty, you know, as we talk through it, I'm pretty comfortable with uh the opinion that it is not substantial. It's, you know, not a substantial uh increase to the non-conformity. And, you know, it's the elevation facing the abutting property is the south elevation. It's you know, it's pretty straightforward, and it's a, again, it's a residential scale. I think it is, you know, appropriate uh building for the neighborhood, so I'm generally uh in favor of approving it for as as it's presented.
Mr. Bitch?
I agree. I would uh approve the request for a special permit.
All right, uh then if you gentlemen will indulge me, I'd like to try my handed a motion again. Um I move that we approve petition twenty twenty-one dash eight for a finding under section one point four point six based on the elements of non-compliance being a mere exacerbation of the existing non-compliant structure. And that the conditions be that the structure be built in substantial compliance with the plans shown to the board. That they comply with all applicable requirements to the Conservation Commission and all applicable requirements of the Board of Health. And that'd be my motion.
Okay, I'd second that motion.
Any corrections or additions?
No.
All right, we ready to vote?
I am.
All right, um all in favor, say aye.
Bitch, aye.
Stepak, aye.
Novak, aye. All right, you win three to nothing. Something we wish the Red Sox could do more.
Thank you so, so much.
Charlie, thank you as well. Good to see you, Namie.
We will make the neighborhood and particularly our neighbors, neighbors po- possibly proud of this.
Well, it's 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 always good to see neighbors supporting each other. We don't always get that, so it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Much. Appreciate your attention. Take care, Charlie.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, next up, petition twenty twenty-one dash nine, Paul Pocillo and Jean Leckebie for a special permit for a retail pharmacy at nineteen North Main Street. Who's here to speak?
I am.
Hello, Ms. Leckebie, welcome back. All right, so tell us, you 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 had been in for a renewal of some other special permits, and you had shamelessly teased us, uh saying that you were gonna come back.
I guess I did, and and we were probably about three days from signing the lease. That's why I I had only a tease.
All right, well, well, we'll make your presentation on 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 your new petition for uh the retail pharmacy.
Yeah, we we are actually very, very happy to have found the right person uh to take over the space. The space included all of the original fixtures because we bought the fixtures from Walgreens and just left it there. We had every intention of putting a pharmacy back. So uh we did find a gentleman who's a pharmacist. He has one other store uh and um I think it's in Milis, if I'm not mistaken. And uh he is, he's been very happy to uh to work with us. Uh and he's very looking forward. He is, his name is Ali Adakani. And uh the name of the pharmacy will be Pine Hill Pharmacy. Uh and we have provided um Jeannie all of the uh the um signage. So he can take a look at it, what that will will look like. There'll be, I think he's already filed for a building permit because he's gonna make a couple of changes in the interior. Uh he will be, the pharmacy will be delivering, uh they will be compounding. Uh they will do vaccinations and they will be uh bundling, I guess they call it, the packaging uh medications to be delivered. And and so these are basically all of the same kinds of things that uh Walgreens and Eaton's before were actually doing. Um so I don't expect any particular change in use. Uh they, their hours are expected, or they are desirous to be Monday through Friday, eight to seven, uh Saturday, eight to four, and Sunday, twelve to four. So those are the the hours that they would like.
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that again? Eight to seven?
Eight to seven, Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
Saturday, eight to four, and Sunday, twelve to four. I think um Walgreens may have had longer hours that were approved.
Those are actually shorter hours than Walgreens.
Yeah, and it it would be helpful if we could, if we could get approval for the longer hours in case they wanted to add an hour here or there. If that's, if that's possible. Um but whatever had been approved before, I I know that it was certainly uh encompassed the the hours that they're currently looking at. Uh they obviously have a lot to do with the board of pharmacy. They have to get lots of approvals from them as well, and and they clearly will do that. I don't know if there are any other questions that you might have, or do you want to take a look at the signage? The signage will be essentially the same sizes as was there. Oh, um Ali is here.
Hi, everyone. This is Ali. So uh I've been, I'm just gonna give you a brief introduction of myself. Uh I've been a pharmacist for more than twenty years in different setting of pharmacy from research, hospital, and outpatient and retail. So I'm very excited to join the community to make a very good impact on the health and safety of the people and also work together to set up a different type of the maxing clinic based on the season and also see if we can do any kind of educational sessions for the people. And we are gonna work with nursing homes and also long-term care facilities and also do the simple compounding. I have another store in Milford and uh we try to be a good fit to the community.
All right, I I've got an operational question for you. If I if I go into your store and buy something, will I get fifty feet of receipts like I get at CVS?
No. No. Yay. Try to stay away from those stuff.
Okay, um thank you, sir, very much. Um is there, is there anyone from the public here to speak uh about this petition? Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes, Ms. uh Gug.
I can't wait. Very happy.
Okay. So just to clarify. That that's that's as a citizen, not as our support, not in your official capacity.
That's as a president.
Why the Pine Hill will go in the exact same space that Walgreens was?
Yes.
And effectively the same signage, but with the different um but with the different name.
Yeah, essentially the same.
Is is the lighting for the, for the building sign, the main building sign, is that uh the same lighting that the Walgreens had?
Yes.
Is the entry, I see the front elevation, is the entry to the left? This is the parking area in front of the.
I I don't, I don't see it. But you're looking.
It's on your, uh, it's on the um the sheet that shows the signage. Yeah, okay.
Do you have that, Jeannie?
Uh let me see if I can find it.
Yeah. We did notice that there was a one error um with respect to the signage. It showed the signage uh on the front doors. The front made, the the front entry doors, the main doors. And that's a common door. That's, so the the signage wouldn't be on that. It would be on the interior door in the front and on the two, the two uh doors in the back.
Okay, so the elevation that shows that signage is really for the back door?
Yeah, that's for the back door.
So um the locations of the signage, are they the same as they were for Walgreens?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, there would be the the top sign on on the, on the um, the 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 stand-up sign in the back. Um and there would be the sign uh above the windows and and on the back sides of the the entrance. So we are, we are well aware of the conformity of having the second sign, no more than the one half the size of the the other sign, that that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Great work, Jeannie. Thank you. And 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 it's the one in the lower right, Ms. Leckebie, that you're saying is a little misleading is the wrong word, but it's. misleading is the wrong word, but it, it's not completely accurate because that's, that's actually gonna be on an interior door, and it's the back door that'll look that way.
The back door will look that way, that's right. Yeah, I think they show the, and, and the second, the second slide is correct. That's, that's where that sign will be. Um, and then the, there is one other that shows that it's the front doors. Yeah, that's, that's the other, the, the other back door sign. Yeah, and the, this is the, this I think is the rear door, actually. Uh, the first page was the, was showing on the front door, but that, that's, that's the common area, so that was an, an error that, that, that will not be there.
Okay.
Other questions from other board members?
No, right. Clarify now, yeah.
Right, well, I'm, uh, I'm favorably inclined, gentlemen, and inclined to, to make the motion if you'll indulge me, but, uh, if you've got other thoughts or wanna go a different direction.
Go ahead, Rick.
Okay, I, I move that we approve petition twenty twenty-one dash nine for a special permit intersections three point two point nineteen and five point two point seven for the operation of a retail pharmacy with signage at nineteen North Main Street. Uh, on, on the conditions that the signage, the exterior signage, size, shape, location, and lighting will all be the same as the existing signs to the prior tenant. Uh, that the, um, hours will be no longer than the hours set forth in condition of five of the prior permit, which is, uh, twenty-one, six oh eight, and we'll, we'll set those forth at length in the decision. But the prior permit was, uh, eight to nine, Monday through Saturday, and eight to six, Sundays. So that, that'll give you a nice.
So they're, so they're a little bit longer than what you wanted.
Right, you don't have to.
In case you ever wanted and change, and want to increase the, the hours.
Right, right, you don't have to be open those hours, you're just, you're just allowed. Uh, the other conditions of twenty-one, six oh eight will be carried forward. It's for the retail space in Building B of Sherburne Crossing Building, first floor space, north side. Special permit will expire on, uh, is it five-year, Genie? So five years?
Aye.
Okay, five years. No drug products, including solutions. She'll be disposed of the Sherburne Crossing septic system. And you have to comply with all other applicable requirements of the, uh, Sherburne Board of Health and other town requirements. And numerous other ones that are outside our jurisdiction, but we'll let you deal with that one. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion, corrections, additions, subtractions?
No, none for me.
None for me? Nope.
All right. Motion, motion has been made and seconded. We have to vote by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Stephick, aye.
Fitch, aye.
All right. Ali, welcome to town. We hope you have a smashing success there.
Thanks for having me, everybody.
Very good.
And remember, the first time I get five feet of receipts, we're gonna have words.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
All right, last but far from least. Petition twenty twenty-one dash ten, Mr. Alexander Weatherall for a finding intersection one point four point six for proposed new building in the same location as a pre-existing non-conforming structure and a special permanent intersection three point two point eighteen, three point two point thirty, and five point two point seven to maintain a restaurant, drive-through, and signage at twenty-three South Main Street in the Business G District. Mr. Weatherall, you were here before. Where are you? There you are. What would you like to say to us?
Actually, uh, just for the record, Eric DeBrul with Bowler Engineering, also obviously joined by Mr. Weatherall, uh, the applicant of Sherburne Fuels. Um, just give a, a brief, uh, kind of summary of, of the applications and what we're, we're doing here. But you kind of listed the, the finding, the, the several special permits that we're requesting, so I won't reiterate those. But we'll go into a little bit of detail once I go through, um, the proposed improvements. Could I share my screen?
That would be great.
Okay, looks like it's sharing. Everyone see that?
Yep.
Perfect, so I'll just go through the existing conditions briefly to help, uh, kind of see what we're doing under the proposed conditions. But effectively, uh, we are looking at twenty-one and twenty-three, uh, South Main Street. Uh, you've got South Main Street, obviously, running bottom of the page. Uh, Mr. Weatherall's property is, uh, several acres, mostly towards the rears, undeveloped, uh, wetland resource areas uh, towards the front in the business, uh, business zone. He has an existing convenience store that's got several uses in it. One of them in this kind of red area I've highlighted is a Dunkin' Donuts uh, drive-through window. You're seeing the gas canopy here, you've got a gas station associated with it. And then this area highlighted in blue is an existing, uh, or was it previously tenanted salon, now vacant, uh, approximately nine hundred square feet. We got several uses throughout the property. Um, you can see the existing drive-through and approximately here is where that drive-through window, uh, would go. I will share the proposed plan. All right, so everyone's seen the color rendering of the site? Perfect. So this is essentially the site plan that we, we provided everyone, same information. We just added some color to it, uh, just for ease of presentation here. But effectively, again, South Main Street across the bottom of the page, this is the existing convenience store, which is going to remain. The existing gas canopy, again, is going to remain. Um, and what, what we're proposing to do is remove or to relocate the drive-through window from the convenience store for the Dunkin'. We're going to remove that existing structure, which was previously tenanted as a salon, which is generally here in this red dash line and propose a, uh, brand-new, state-of-the-art, freestanding Dunkin' Donuts facility with a drive-through window. Again, the drive-through window is one of the special permits, uh, that we are, uh, requesting tonight. So, you know, operationally, how this drive-through is gonna be significantly improved, um, under existing conditions. Effectively have the drive-through order point, speaker, and the menu board very close to where the window is. So you have very limited area to stack before you make your order, and then Dunkin' Donuts has very limited time from the time you order to be able to make your food, and by the time you get to the window and to have it ready. So it's, it's just very inefficient for them and, and not very standard how that's operating today. Um, by being able to move this, uh, facility, you're substantially increasing the ability to stack where you want it, which is in the, the drive-through lane and not back towards the street. We're relocating the menu board and the speaker towards the back of the site. So again, we're substantially increasing the amount of cars, um, again, just to get that out of the main, main drive, stack it where we want it to be stacked in the drive-through lane, and then we're substantially increasing from the order point to the drive-through window. Many more cars can stack there. What that does is when you do get up to the window, your food will be ready, and obviously a much more efficient, uh, process. Um, so relocating that drive-through to the side of the property, um, that's gonna be very beneficial operationally. Uh, the finding that we are requesting has to do with the front yard setback. The, the existing structure, which we're demolishing, uh, we're effectively holding the same corner. There's a sixty-foot front yard setback required. It's currently forty-seven point one feet, and we'd be proposing to maintain that front setback of that corner at forty-seven point one feet. So that's what the finding is for, to, to reduce that required sixty-foot front yard setback. Uh, we think it's a reasonable request, again, because we're effectively removing one building for another. It's a very similar scale of the building, um, and for the reasons that it's going to substantially improve how the drive-through functions on the site today. Uh, we believe it'd be reasonable to, uh, to grant that, uh, relief, shifting that building back to meet the, uh, that minimum setback requirement would effectively shorten the queue length. We'd be removing some of the operational, some of these parking spaces, uh, so it would severely limit kind of how, uh, the applicant can use this property effectively for, for the existing tenant that they do have. You'll notice, uh, very dense landscaping plan, which, again, the planning board's gonna have a, a chance to review. But just wanted to share that with you as, as well. Got over two hundred and fifty new plantings, uh, throughout on the site. Um, you know, effectively, the, the parking, uh, more or less is gonna remain the same. This convenience store will have dedicated parking with an eighty-eight parking stall that's already there today. Most of this parking, again, will be dedicated, uh, to the convenience store. There is a set of stairs in the event that someone wanted to go into the Dunkin' Donuts. Um, they can use those stairs. There's also pedestrian connecting out to South Main, uh, with accessible parking stall uh, dedicated for the Dunkin' Donuts. Um, there will be seating in a bathroom in this facility, but mainly, uh, you know, we would expect most of those existing customers being used to using the drive-through, and that's how they most likely would use this facility, uh, for the drive-through. Relative to the, so that, again, so there's a finding for that front setback, the special permit for the drive-through window. And then the last special permit would be for wall signage, um, within the BG District. So I'll just briefly pull up the architectural elevations. Um, Alex worked very closely a while back preliminarily with the planning board and the historic, uh, commission um, to, to get, make sure he had the architecture right, uh, before we made a formal filing. Uh, had several meetings, um, and made sure he collected all the, all the feedback from anyone that had a stake in it at the town level. Um, so we believe we have the elevation that, that, uh, the planning board and historic commission will be, will be happy with. The hardy plank siding, um, and a fairly, um, fairly nominal sign package for the scale of the building, but relative to the sign package, we're proposing a twenty-three-square-foot wall sign to twenty-four-inch-high lettering, and it's a little less than, than twelve feet, eleven feet, six inches long. It's externally illuminated with some uplighting, some decorative uplighting. That's on that front-facing elevation, so it's just the Dunkin' sign. On the elevation where your car would come up to the drive-through window, um, Dunkin's, uh, kind of new branding would call it the town's name with Dunkin', so you got Sherburne Dunkin'. That's a little bit smaller sign at twelve square feet, twenty-four-inch-high uh, lettering, so the lettering's about nine inches each, and about eight feet long. Um, so that would be the special permit request under the five point two point seven. Happy to go into as much detail as you want. Again, we are definitely going before the planning board next week. We have a noticement intent filing going into the Conservation Commission, uh, that is for work associated with this wetland resource area at the back of the site. We have a very small portion of the site that goes into that resource area um, shown, and there's also gonna be a replacement of the septic field, uh, that's underway with, uh, the Board of Health. So that design is, is, is ongoing, so we've got a handful more steps after, after the zoning board, uh, but did wanna make you aware of, of those processes.
Sir, did, did you tell us the size of that, uh, primary? Building sign, how many square feet is it?
The proposed building is thirteen hundred and.
No, no, that, the, the sign on the front, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I'll go back to that. So the front wall sign, we are calling twenty-three square feet.
Okay. Right, so it's, it's under the max for sixty, okay? All right, thank you, sorry, sorry for the interruption. Keep going.
Nope, yeah, I mean, uh, it's pretty much, pretty much there. Um, so again, we, we believe the proposal, one for the special permit meets kind of the, the intent of the, the zoning bylaw, we're effectively just relocating that existing drive-through window and optimizing the operations and how it works, which hopefully will improve any of the site circulation on site. Um, you know, taking a, a very underutilized building and, uh, providing a brand-new facility. Um, and then relative to the finding, I kind of went through those earlier, but again, happy to go into more detail, and I'll turn it back to, to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Um, uh, and, and I presume that's your, your presentation, although you and Mr. Weatherall reserve your rights to comment further, depending on what other people have to say.
Correct, Alex, you, did I miss anything, anything we'd like to cover?
I don't think we missed anything that the ZBA would want us to bring up.
Okay, um, and is there anyone else, uh, here to comment on this petition this evening? And maybe we can stop the screen share so we can see the, the assembled multitudes a little better, get a sense of who's trying to speak.
Absolutely.
Well, maybe, maybe not a multitude, the assembled parts.
They're all extremely important people.
Anyone here to comment on this, uh, petition?
Well, uh, I just have, I, I guess it's in the way of a question. I'm wondering about the architecture of this project. It's a larger structure, entirely new structure. Um, and been represented that the planning board and the historic district commission people uh, reviewed this, this plan and, uh, passed on its appropriateness in effect. I, I don't know what record there is of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, it's a good question, John. I'm, I'm not sure if that's what they said. I think what they said is they're going before the planning board. They've had preliminary discussions, but their planning board hearings on the seventh. And, uh, Ron, you'll be able, they have to go before you guys, right? They've had some preliminary discussions, but you haven't.
We've, we've had, I, I think what's been presented has been generally accurate. Um, they, we've had several preliminary meetings. We, we haven't had the final, which would, uh, determine whether we would issue a certificate of appropriateness or not. But there were, there were a number of issues, and, um, in general, this is, this is a direction we had talked about at our last meeting. So there, there are probably some details here that, uh, need to be sorted out in the, in the final approval or the final review. I mean, I see some colors here that, uh, we didn't talk about, for instance, and things of that.
If I, if I could just say what, I haven't submitted the request to, to the Historic District Commission because the list of attachments required on that form include the site plan and the architectural drawings. So I didn't think it was practical to do so. It's, coincidentally, and from a nice piece of serendipity, Jim Guarino is here. Jim was given the assignment at the last meeting, which was a combined meeting of the planning board and the Historic District Commission. Jim was given the assignment to meet with Laura and me, my wife, and confirm, uh, the final set of colors. And the drawing that, uh, Eric DeBrul presented just now is representative of the colors that, that Jim, uh, speaking, I think on behalf of the Historic District, signed off on. So for example, Ron, it's different from what you've seen as far as, for instance, the, the blacking out of the window frames, whereas they were silver. And it was a thought that anything we could do to make those window frames withdraw from view would be good. So Jim called for black, we used black, but the colors there are, 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 are what was settled on per se.
Well, w- would it be, would it be fair to say, Mr. Weatherall, that they're, they're the colors that, that you believe that, uh, the representative of the Historic District Commission wanted and, and therefore hopefully will go well when it goes before them formally?
I would certainly hope so, Rick.
I'm not on that, I'm not on that mission, so. Um, I just, I just, I, 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 I just, um, I think we're all trying to be careful as to what you have in your pocket now and what you don't. It sounds like you've tried to do a lot of good work to try to, uh, uh, work with the boards and try to reflect the various constituencies and, and have things teed up as well as you can. But you're not there yet with those boards, and that's okay. This is an appropriate first step. Uh, Ms. Neidra, is there anything you'd like to say on behalf of the planning board?
All right, I was, I was, uh, chair of the planning board when we went through those discussions with Alex Weatherall and with the Historic Commission. And, uh, we, we deferred to the Historic Commission for the, the final color scheme uh, and detail, uh, because that's really not our, uh, our, our wheelhouse. But I should say in general that the planning board was very much in favor of the overall plan for several reasons. One, it, uh, is a big improvement on the safety, pedestrian safety. For several reasons. One, it is a big improvement on the safety, pedestrian safety. Traffic safety and traffic flow. And two. It provides some services that we're generally sorely lacking in the town. In particular, a place to sit down and have a cup of coffee informally, a place that's easily accessible from the. To to the elderly housing complexes. This makes it a lot more accessible and a lot friendlier for them and. First and foremost, an actual bathroom that people can use in the town when they go to have a cup of coffee. So it has, it it's definitely an improvement of that south town center area. And the pedestrian plan that they have is a good one for the site. I think it's about the best it could be. It'll make the town, the south town center a much more user-friendly place. And it provides a. A better. Resource for people working in town hall and the new library to say nothing of the church next door. So. Planning Board preliminarily was very favorable, but of course, the hearing is next week. And I'm no longer on the planning board, so I'm just telling you a report of what was said previously.
Fair enough. Anyone else with comments that our board should hear? Whoops. Mr. Guarino is unable to activate his microphone using iPhone. Could you maybe ping out in the, could everybody see that in the chat, or was it just me? Alright, Jim, maybe you could type out if you, you could do, give it to us closed caption. Or maybe, maybe we can get this down to yes or no. Jim, did, do you feel that that Alex and Eric accurately reflected your views on the colors? Like the old Mr. Ed, clap once for once, once for yes. Alright. No, okay. Well, I think we're gonna have to. Take take Mr. Weatherall and and Mr. DeBrul at their word, knowing that, of course, they'll be put through their paces when they actually go before those boards. Whether all presented were acceptable. Okay, when we met in person, okay. Great. There we are. You finally have a way, way, way through. Okay, let me see if I can close the chat here. There we go, okay. Anybody else with anything to say or or write, as the case may be, that the board should be considering? Alright. Board members. How do we, how do we feel about this? We've sort of got three different things. One is the. The setback. The other is the signage and the other is the moving the special permit for the. For the drive-up window, which they already have. But in a different location.
So why don't we talk about the. The issue of the front setback.
Right. They're not, if I, if I, I understand. You correctly, Mr. DeBrul, they're not increasing the non-conformity at all. The, it is the same setback and Eric, could I ask you to put up that sort of overall site plan you had?
Yes.
Because one of the key features here is that. This is sort of a phantom setback because the road was moved when that building was first built. Was that? That Jackson's General Store, Ron? That little building there?
No. Jackson's was, wasn't Jackson's where the grocery store, where the Citgo is now?
Don't know, what, what, but whatever, when when that building was built, the road was a lot closer and you can see the curve of the road. And 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 South Main Street moved away from the property. So the the street line of, there's a large town-owned strip. Between what the actual pavement of South Main Street and and these properties. And so. While he appears to have a fifty-seven foot setback and legally does, his actual setback from. The actual border of South Main Street, the way most people would think about it is. Roughly seventy, eighty, maybe even a hundred feet, but much, but way over the sixty feet.
Glad you pointed that out because I think it makes the discussion academic.
I agree.
A- as in, as in it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood to be built in place? Yeah, it wouldn't, wouldn't seem so. So tha- that's kind of at least my leaning on that one. How do you, how do you feel? How do you gents feel about relocating the the drive-up window?
It's it's a definite improvement to the site plan.
I absolutely.
Okay, and then the final, final thing is the new signage, which which does require a special permit. It is, it is within our, within our discretion and that it's way under the sixty feet. Go ahead, Ron.
Well, it's within the. Dimensional requirements of the bylaw, so it is conforming in that regard. I mean, this is just a personal thing. My point of view, I'd like the Duncan sign to be a little bit smaller, but. Again, that's, I don't know if we have the authority to. I mean, since it meets the bylaw requirement. I don't know that we can make it smaller.
Well, let's discuss that. The, the sign under sixty feet is not as upright. I don't think, unless unless I'm reading it, it's a special permit.
That's true.
And. It's consistent with other similar special permits for signs. Given. If you want to discuss it, it's in a zone we can discuss. It's not as of right, I don't think. Okay, Jonathan, correct me if I have it wrong.
No, I don't think you have it wrong. My question is. Are we stuck with? The, the Duncan orange. Raspberry coloring. Lit up at night. I I know that in Dover, sorry to bring in Dover into the conversation, but the Duncan location there was. Hotly debated. And I haven't. Checked out its signage recently, but I, I don't think that. They've got the. The pumpkin raspberry color. Which is going to be. Illuminated. In the evening. I just. I I, tha- that's really something, I guess. Might be discussed. And connection with the overall architecture.
Well, and and the overall, we we can react to the overall architecture, although I think carefully. If we thought there was something in the overall architecture that made it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Exactly.
That, that, that would be the argument. What's there now is a much more appropriate-looking building for next to the church. But it's also unused and has been unused for a long time. It is essentially functionally obsolete. So.
It's a big change.
Yeah, it's it's a big change.
And it's, it's a. Well, it's, it's, it's a modern building. It doesn't have any. Pretense of. Historic details.
Right.
Georgian, whatever.
Right.
Details, so. But. Well, I mean, I I defer to people who are. A little more expert in that area. I. I just asked the question. Are are we, are we stuck with this sign coloration? Are we?
Legally, we're not. Legally, we could turn it down and say we hate the colors. Now, whether or not that would stand up if we were hauled into land court is for smart guys like you to know. I'm just a poor dumb. There, you're a smart litigator. But 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 it, but in theory, we could go that way. And and Marion will get to it in just, in just a moment. Mr. Stafford, do you have strongly held views on 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 the building that that are relevant to our. Issue of the setback. The setback staying in the. The setback continuing to intrude into the required setback area. Being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Well, I could offer. A a little bit of of the discussion that we had at our previous meetings. I mean, the historic district commission. Requested that. The building have a gabled roof and. Alex said that. He really couldn't afford to build that and that. If. If that were to be the requirement, that the project wouldn't go forward. So. We basically compromised and said that we could live with a flat-roofed building. And that just. If we were to use some of the materials. That. That occur on the adjacent buildings, that we would get some relationship between this building and the existing buildings. In that way. So. You know, it's a compromise that we. Basically came to in our discussions. And it's definitely not our first choice. Now, whether. How that fits with. The situation in that. You know, this building and how it relates to the neighborhood. Relative to the setback. Is is kind of another issue, really.
Thank you. Marion, your your hand was up and now it's down.
Alright, just reiterating a little bit of the hours that we spent discussing the look of the place. Within planning board and with the historic commission. At one point. I can tell you that a representative from Duncan came to one of our meetings and. Made very clear that there's a certain range of looks that they'll accept. And outside of that, it's like, well, forget it. And so Alex. I think is sort of between a rock and a hard place here. The town would like one thing, but Duncan won't let him do it. The town would like a gabled roof, but it makes it so much more expensive because a lot of. Of infrastructure has to go on the roof of the building to make the thing work. So there were a lot of moving parts, and I think this is the the best we could come up with, and we were hoping. The Historic Commission could decide on on the color, because planning board was rather agnostic regarding the color, color. Regarding the clock, the color, the best that you can do. To blend in with the other buildings is the best you can do. And of course, there's the modern library now jutting out across the street and there's the service station next door, so. The the church is not the only, the only thing you're trying to match.
Just a moment. Ms. Guthrie, do you have, did you have pictures of the Dover Dunkin' Donuts? Can you put them up?
I think I can, hold on.
I'm I'm sorry, Jonathan, go ahead. You're saying?
No, Marion made some very good points about the currently existing modern structures in that area of the. Beautiful new library addition. And. Sherbin Fuel. This building is right up against the Congregational Church, which is a lovely building. I. Say as a non-member of of that congregation.
And. Alex or Eric, if you know the answer to this, the Dunkin' Donuts in Dover certainly appears to have a different look. Is that maybe from a different time, a different ownership? I mean, Duncan has gone through a whole bunch of iterations and now is this. Private equity colossus.
It's a, I think Marion touched on it very, very well. I mean, it's a certain look. It's really, what exactly are you getting at? The color scheme, the pitched roof, the windows. It's, it's a moving target. This is not a drive-through. It's a very large building converted from, I think, what used to be a waiting room for a train station. The volume that this building serves and way of traffic is is small compared to what you'll see in Sherborn. It's a, it's a completely different approach, aesthetic, et cetera.
It it it's an existing building, as I understand.
It was the train station. Back when there were trains in Dover.
Antique shop, and then it was a. An ice cream store. And. But it, this, I'm just looking at the signage there. It's, it's. It's the gold on black, which is. You know, we have gotten into the color of the of the signs. That we've approved recently. On Main Street and. So I'm just.
Alright, let me, let me take a shot at trying to pull some of these threads together. This is not yet a motion, but. The sense I'm hearing from both of you and from and and from the commenters. And Jeannie, why don't we, why don't we take down the Dover Dunkin' Donuts now? That's, that's useful. It's helpful. It shows that Dunkin' Donuts and the pitch roof can exist, but it may not be completely relevant and on point to what they're willing to go along with now.
I just did it just for the signage, not for what the building looked like.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's, it's. It's, it's useful. In terms of the, I'm looking at my fellow board members, in terms of the relocation. Of the drive-up window, that special permit. That one seems like a very, very good idea, more safety, more everything. Everybody pretty much favorably inclined that way.
Right, right.
On 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 the sign itself, we have a little wood to chop because we do have some discretion there. Let me make the argument to the two of you that while all of us may have relatively strongly held views. On how much we love or don't love this design. And love or don't love corporations that say my way or the highway. And by that, I mean Duncan's and not you, Alex. This board's job is to, is to rule under one point four point six, and I have a hard time saying. That the fact that we may not be crazy about the look of the building. Makes leaving it at fifty-seven feet substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there now. Particularly when the fifty-seven feet is really more like seventy. I just, it doesn't feel like that really fits. And 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 in saying that, I also think that there are two other boards in town that are going to have a lot to say about the aesthetics here. How do you feel about that, gents? Not liking it, huh? Okay, we don't always, we don't always have to agree.
I I basically agree with that approach. I mean, I can decouple the two.
Well. We're taking a. Prior existing non-conforming structure. Tearing it down. And putting in its place an entirely new structure. So, uh, I don't, I don't think that, that we can say that the appearance of the new structure is irrelevant to the analysis.
No, I'm, I'm not saying it's irrelevant. I'm just saying that our, yes, I'm struggling to say it. I think our weighing of how we feel on the aesthetics ought to be informed by our relative role here.
Well, I, I agree with that.
But we might weigh differently.
Yeah. And, uh,
Okay.
I, you know, so, um, I don't personally think it would be beyond us to say that, that the the appearance should be more constant with the appearance of the structure that currently exists there, which does have a gable roof.
Right. So, so legally, what we'd have to say is we, we decline to find it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
That's, that's right. Um, I, I, I'm not arguing, uh, we're taking the position that we should find that in its current architectural design. It is, uh, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than a currently existing non-conforming structure.
You, you're just saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, look, that's a live issue and not a crazy way to look at.
Yeah, I think it, I think it is a live issue.
Fair, fair enough.
And, uh, and while, uh, it's, it's certainly related. I think that the signage is very much, uh, a live issue and that it can be changed uh, in a way that, uh, I don't know. Eliminates the kind of state highway feel of the, of the illuminated, uh, pumpkin colored Duncan logo, large illuminated Duncan pumpkin logo. Why, why can't that be? Gold on the black. Well, like the, the sign we saw on the, on the Dover Duncan, which is black background with a uh, gold lettering.
Right. And, and it may be the current Duncan's management just won't do that. Yeah, the, the, the fact that it exists in Dover is, is relevant and interesting, but I don't think it's necessarily doesn't, I don't think it stops current Duncan management from saying, look, this, this is what we do, and if you don't do this, to heck with you.
Well, yeah, um, I'm, I mean, I'm not going to, uh, not going to comment on that corporate attitude.
And, 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 and I wasn't at the planning board hearing, so I, I may be unfairly characterizing their position.
Okay, I, I don't know what, what their position is. I, I, I would like to repeat that I think that this is an excellent project. I think it's a good idea for all the reasons that Marion, uh, reviewed. We're being asked to, uh, pass on the signage and we, we looked at coloration of, of the signage. We have recently, um, several occasions.
It's a legitimate area for us. We're the special permit granting authority for the sign.
And and if there's somebody, uh, in not Alex, but somebody, uh, corporately who's got an initial the project, who says, well, we're not going to initial it. If the local zoning board of appeals requires this coloration of our sign. Oh, I'm not. I don't know. I, I just don't think that that's, uh, something that really should concern us. I think we need to take an objective look at, uh, the application of the bylaw to this particular situation. And if somebody were to look at the sign as, as as drawn here in real life driving by at night and ask, oh, that's, how did that get there? Answer, zoning board of appeals approved it.
Right, right after we put the orange trainasaurus next door to it.
That's, you know, that's a, that's a bit trivial.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
We gotta be careful here.
Right, I, I, I know, I know.
Duncan corporate will not approve a different color for the sign. So I think the ZBA is just gonna have to decide if, if they're comfortable or not. I'm not, this is not an ultimatum. I, you know, I just can't, I need a willing tenant. If I, if you can't have their color sign, they're not a willing tenant. This, this was, I was, I was in front of the, you know, bronze committees five times and for the, the planning board three times. We had, we had people from corporate in at least twice. Marion's right. Uh, we, we, we went round and round and round in colors. They will not back down on the orange with the pink apostrophe. They, they backed off extremely on the other pink highlights and what you saw is a fairly monochrome result of an awful lot of to-ing and fro-ing. I, I, you know, I, I don't, you know, I'm not defeatist. I just, you know, we're, we're doing the, we have done the best we can.
I, 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 I hear you and, 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 and I hear that as saying, listen, there, there isn't a lot of wiggle room here. Um, and Marion, it, it sounds like, uh, you, you, you had stepped away or, or we're just out of camera range for a moment. But it sounds like you'd largely confirm Alex's reports.
Yeah, that's exactly what we heard at the planning board, and we made all the same arguments that you guys are making now about the color orange and pink and the style of the sign and the lightest sign and all that. We made all those same arguments. And what we heard from, uh, the representative of Duncan corporate was that just no way, you know? It's our way, this is what we require now. And given, I mean, the, the representative of Duncan was didn't have the leeway herself to make those decisions. She was, you know, giving us the corporate line. That was clear, but that was the line. Yeah.
Is this, is this a dunk? Is this going to be operated by Dunkin' Donuts corporately as the, the franchisor operating this?
Alex, you know this answer better than I do, but almost, don't they almost always operate under franchisees, but the franchisees have really strict handcuffs of how the place looks?
It's a very complex situation for the reasons you hinted at, Rick, and I'll start there and then work my way backwards. Long after, believe it or not, we all began with Ron's committee and the planning board to, to reach a compromise. That massive private equity funded roll-up of fast food companies acquired Duncan. To be perfectly honest, I don't even know if there's any substantial personnel left in Canton right now. They're being moved, I believe, to Nashville. So that, that in and of itself has made it challenging for my architect to even maybe maintain communication with Duncan corporate. That's not neither here nor there. It's not your problem. It's not my problem. It's just a reality. That's the world we live in. The way Duncan works is they're, they're a franchise operation. In December 2020, thankfully, because he was no good, my, my previous tenant, the, uh, the Sardina family of Holliston sold to one of the Patel's. They now, they, they now operate the third, what used to be 13 franchise locations owned by the former holder of the friend, the, the Sardinas. So the Patel's now own this and they're working sort of alongside me with Duncan corporate to now, whatever the name of this acquiring company is, to get all the approvals necessary. And I'll tell you, as a, for instance, as the person who's committed to building a shelf for the franchisee, I don't, at the moment, have, you know, the landlord work letter that specifies exactly what Duncan corporate requires of me. I just operate under the assumption, there is, there is a set of standards and I'll fill it when I get it. But what I do know, and as I said before, is, you know, with all the eight meetings of the to-ing and fro-ing is, is, is reasonably cooperative, very cooperative, frankly, as corporate Duncan was, they were not going to relent on the orange and the pink apostrophe. Uh, what, it's, it's neither here nor there for Jonathan, but you know, that whatever it was, 24 square foot sign was significantly smaller, for instance, and less sort of abstract for us than what we started with. And if you could, if you want to see the entire iteration, we're happy to show it to you. But, you know, I'm, I am between a rock and a hard place. I, I can't, I cannot afford a pitched roof. I frankly can't afford to take this too much further. I, I'll have to call tomorrow and ask my architect to cease and desist on the $13,000 I'll spend on permit drawings. This is, you know, it's hard. It's, it's really hard.
Right, right. We, we, we get that. We hear that, or cer- certainly I do. Um, okay. Um, and, and new commentary from anybody? Board members, we got it. We got a couple of di- different options and we can exercise any of the three of them on any of the items ahead of us. Grant, you can deny, we can defer it to another meeting. Um, it would continue essentially. I guess my feeling is that as to the relocation of the, of course, from the applicant standpoint, unless he gets all three, it's not, 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 not a much use to it. Certainly on the relocation of the drive-up window, I'd be in favor of voting that this evening. In terms of my personal weighing of the to and fro's on the, uh, uh, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Personal feeling is that in light of the excess setback that's there already and the fact that two other boards have primary responsibility for the aesthetics and planning here, I'd be inclined to, to support that one. On the sign, I guess, subject to what you guys talked me into, I'm inclined to go along with it because while I, I don't like it and I'd like it to be smaller. It sounds like it's already been downsized some. And frankly, having people not stop in the middle of the road is a safety issue. And that additional, you know, is probably four cars that they moved the, um, that, that they moved the, uh, whatever, the, the, the menu window. Uh, uh, that gets some people off South Main Street and people stop right in the middle of South Main Street. Um, and that's, that's not awesome. So I guess I, I'd, I'd live with the sign. We'd probably wrestle with Alex about when it could be on because I bet they're, they're, they're much less inflexible about having it on all night. I would get, gather than having their colors. But that's just my sense. So where, where are you guys in all of this?
You forgot restaurant.
Oh, uh, yeah, well, they, they'd be moving the restaurant with it, with, within the site. So again, if people, if people weren't wound up about the, uh, the size, uh, you know, there's a, there's a restaurant on that site now. I think, I think, I think like the drive-up window, it's hard for us to turn that down, given the permits they have now. But the aesthetics, well, the, 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 I guess if the rest, if the restaurant was offensive, you're right, Jeannie. If we were so offended by the way the restaurant looked, we could say, we're not giving you a special permit for that restaurant and that location in that building.
Well, they, they have a permit for a restaurant for the pizza, but not for Dunkin' Donuts.
Right, right. Right, but it, but it's not like we can expect, say, we're shocked, shocked that Alex might ever have food service on this site.
I just didn't, forget it.
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 it, it's a fair point. Um, it's, it's. Jonathan, where are you? Ron, where are you on this?
I, 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 I didn't understand the argument, uh, relative to the, the sign. Do you say there's some problem with people reading the sign if it's smaller? Did I understand that correctly?
I, I wasn't saying that. I certainly didn't mean to. That's what came out. I was, what I was trying to say is we would like the sign even smaller and it sounds like it's already been shrunk. And that Alex and Marion are saying that, that battle has been fought and we've gotten as much as we can get on the size of the sign.
It's, it's not small enough for me. It, I mean, to me, it looks like it's a standard size and this is a very small Dunkin' Donuts show. And it's not scaled properly. It's too big.
All right. And where, where are you on the, uh, restaurant use and the, um, and the setback?
It's hard, hard to make an argument against approving the setback, given the distance from the actual street line back to the building. I know that bylaw does read from the property line, but
Right.
For all practical intent, there's quite a distance from the edge of the street to the building.
All right, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying you'd support the setback, you'd support relocating the drive-up window. The sign's too big. You're otherwise okay with the restaurant use being relocated?
Uh, that's correct.
Mr. Fitch.
Well, I agree with, with Ron. Who is an architect. We are and a member of the historic district commission and we are fortunate to have his eye on this and I agree that this, that the proportion of the size just everybody goes, I don't like the color on. But, uh, size, uh, my group, what Ron said. It's disproportionate.
Okay, and where are you on the setback being not, um, not more substantially detrimental?
I agree that it's an issue with, uh, special permit that permits the construction of entirely new building. That is at the same non-conforming setback from the street line.
So, so you'd, you'd support making the positive finding that they are not more substantially detrimental?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And the relocation of the, uh, or the, the restaurant use. It's a walk-in now, would have sit-down.
Well, uh, the reasons that Marion said, I, I, I think that that is a a public benefit. Have, uh, an area to sit down, uh, and have coffee that has a, has a bathroom. That, that's progress. In Sherwin. And
where, where progress is sometimes slow.
And, uh, near the, uh, elderly housing and the library, I, I, I think it's I support that idea.
Okay. So if I'm reading the scoring correctly in sort of the sense of the board, there are at least two votes. that would not grant the signage special permit on the grounds that it's too big. And then so maybe one thing we could think about is is deferring that one. If we defer it, the planning board gets a chance to hold its hearing. Maybe I don't know what the timing is with historic permission, but it it's certainly easier for us to take up the issue later than if we if we turn it if we vote three three to nothing or even two to one against that special permit's dead for, I think, but two years, something like that, right? So that's procedurally, I'd rather not do that. I'd rather allow options under which it could go ahead. I'm not expecting you guys to change your mind necessarily. I'm just trying to head off and impasse where I can. So I guess what I lobby you guys towards is that we take up and vote on the setback, the relocation of the drive up window and the restaurant use this evening and that we continue the special permit application for the signage to to our next hearing.
I agree with that approach.
I also agree with that approach. That's fine.
Okay. All right. So let me start by making a motion that we continue to our next hearing, the application under five point two point seven as the signage. Any second discussion?
When's your next hearing, Rick?
Haven't said it yet.
A second.
Jonathan? Comments?
No, I'm in favor of that motion.
Okay. All in favor of continuing the signage special permit under five point two point seven to our next hearing? Say, I know that votes I.
Step guy.
Pitch, I.
Okay. With respect to the requested finding under one point four point six and the relocation of the drive through window and the special permit, use special permit for restaurant use. I'd like to make a motion. Unless one of you wants to make a motion.
No, thanks.
No fool he. I move on the remaining portions of section twenty petition twenty twenty one dash ten that we grant the requested finding under section one point four point six for the new building in the same location as as the pre-existing non-conforming structure that we grant the requested special permit to relocate the drive through window and that we grant the requested special permit for use as a restaurant conditioned upon compliance with all applicable requirements of the board of health, the planning board and the historic district commission. That's the right way to. It's your historic district commission hat that you're wearing here, right, Ron?
Yeah, we will have a we will have a review and
and that the construction
of appropriateness.
Right. And that the construction substantially comply with the plans submitted to our board in all material respects. That's my motion. And for a period of five years, Jeannie?
It always has been five.
Then so it shall be. That's a good reason to go in a different direction.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor, say aye. No back votes, aye.
Step guy.
Pitch, aye.
Okay. So whether all you do not have a whole loaf nor half a loaf, you have three quarters of a loaf with one quarter deferred.
When do you think your next year will be?
That's an excellent question and very fair. And Ms. Ms. Guthrie was
Because I just so you, you know, yeah, I mean, you, you know, the wrong remember Jim, everybody Marion, you know, we obviously the historic commission was not it wasn't in their purview to opine on on signage. We all were very conscious of that. Now we know because the other shoe has dropped. I am just, I am very, very doubtful that I'll get any grace from Duncan corporate. So I may be in a real bind, Rick, just so you all know. I think I'm in about fifty three thousand now. I'd rather not spend thirteen thousand more on, you know, et cetera, et cetera. You don't need to hear my woes. But this, you know, this may not work, I guess, is the bottom line. Just so you know that. And so therefore, you know, you know, risk is uncertainty. Uncertainty is when's your meeting? I need to know when that meeting is so I can sort of cut my risk as soon as possible.
We get all that and just like you get. I was trying to save you from a turn down tonight and, you know, that's what we can do tonight. Jeannie, what else do we have coming in down the pipeline at us?
I don't think you have anything until December.
Well, I think December is probably not the answer Alex wants to hear.
So you could just continue it for just to do this.
Could we? Could we meet in a, well, let's see. Tell me the rest of your permitting schedule, Alex. You've got the
On the seventh.
On the seventh, right?
Eight forty five on the seventh. I do the planning board.
What about historic district? Are you in front of them yet or did you?
Again, again, I had, I
You gotta draw a lot of plans. Yeah.
I have the history. You could go to the minutes. I have the historic district commission's tacit approval. What I haven't done is submit the application because the application demands documents that weren't
Right. Yeah, I get it.
Again, this is the this is the maddening linear process of approvals in the in the sweet burg of Sherborne, you know, it puts
Now, come on, be fair. It's everywhere in the Commonwealth.
All right. Well, that doesn't make it right.
I didn't say that. Okay. You know, if we met again in early October, that sounds like that
Too late, too late.
Project's dead, I guess, huh?
Well, it is, Ron. I mean, it is, Ron. Again, there are there are. There are very few. Look, there are very few bodies. There are very few bodies.
You're gonna you're gonna dump this project over the signage? I don't get it.
No, I need I need approval to build this project, Ron. If I don't have, if I don't move my tenant, I will lose the tenant. Nothing's changed. And again, I know, of course, I'm emotional, I'm expressive, but I'm just, I'm being honest. That's who I am. I've been honest for eleven and a half years. I'll do the very best I can, but I cannot wait till October.
Well,
I I wonder, just speaking out of turn for a minute, I wonder exactly what would need to happen between now and the next zoning board meeting for this to be passable? That is, would Alex have to go to Duncan corporate and get them to change their line or what? What's your? What's the bar? What's the bar?
Well, let's see. It's a special permit, so he actually needs all three votes in favor. And right now he's got two against. So either the facts have to change, so the two members who are not leaning his way are in favor or they need to change their mind for other reasons or or he's not going to have that permit. If he doesn't have a signed permit, you know, Alex is right that planning these things is a little bit like the old school Christmas lights. If one goes out, they all go out.
Yeah. Could I just make one last shout over the bow?
That's not the phrase you want to use, but go ahead.
No, it's a bad one. But you know, I think we, in the end, I'm speaking for the the former planning board took into account that this building is, as you say, it's actually about a hundred feet back from the road. So we totally appreciate the unpalatability of those signage colors. We totally get that. But if that's where the project rises or falls, maybe you could take into account the fact that it's quite far back from the road. And it's you. You don't notice that building much because it's set back and the colors of the building are muted in this case. It's no longer white. So it won't stand out as much. And we were hoping on planning board that it would sort of blend into the background.
Right, okay, I understood and thank you. Well, I don't know about how members feel about a shorter fuse meeting. I'm I'm away through the eighteenth and back after that. If we had a be Jeannie, I think you're right that we don't need to re-advertise this. So it's a continuation. And so we don't. We don't have that problem. When when could you guys come back?
I'm flexible.
Because that's after the eighteenth.
I can meet any time.
The twenty third is three weeks from tonight.
Twenty third. Ron, could you?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Alex will be back. Well, Alex will be back on the twenty third of September.
Wait a second. I'm sorry. I can't do the twenty third. I am away on the twenty third.
What about Tuesday, the twenty first?
I am away.
When do you return?
I the twenty eighth.
And when do you leave?
The sixteenth.
Okay, we've timed our our times out of the office perfectly. But you are back the Monday, the twenty seventh.
Yes, I get back on the twenty seventh, so I could do the Monday, the twenty seventh, seven.
Are you? Are you flying in from somewhere? Are we gonna make you go from Logan right to us? Attractive as that sounds.
I am flying and I should be.
How about Tuesday?
Let's do the twenty eighth, Tuesday, the twenty eighth.
That you be well rested in a good frame of mind.
I will be in a good frame of mind. I'm in a good frame of mind.
I'm I'm sure. I don't doubt that. I meant no negative implication.
Yeah, no.
I just hate coming back from vacation, running right into a hearing. Okay. Ron, could you do Tuesday night, September twenty eighth?
What?
Could you do a zoning hearing Tuesday night, September the twenty eighth, seven P M?
Yes, yes.
All right. That's my proposal. Seems like it works for all three of us.
Yep. Okay.
All right. So we're continued to Tuesday night, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. We'll look forward to hearing from everybody at that time. And if if the answer is we're wasting our time and should stop, Alex will tell us that. We get it. We appreciate it. We appreciate everybody's efforts.
Okay.
Thanks, Rick. See you then.
Thank you all very much. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Maybe you'll make that motion, Ron, huh? After having made be do all the heavy lifting?
I'd move the way you adjourn this meeting.
Second. Mister Fitch?
I'm in favor of adjourning.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time and patience.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.